To this way of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, the only thing I would have to share tonight is that our library's gearing up for the Verdi Valley SciTech event, which will be held this Friday, April 8th, from 3:30 to 5:30, and all ages are welcome. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I'd like to remind the public again that, I believe, two weeks from this Saturday, no, one week from this Saturday, is the annual Brian Mickelson Memorial Run. And it's always a great day, a great event, and we have some great courses, so we'd love to see some people out there.
All right. Anybody else? Vice Mayor?
Just a couple little announcements. We're having a job fair at the college next Monday, the 11th, and we've got probably fifty employers, they're having a hard time finding employees, so it'd be good time to go looking for a job at the job fair. It's free, so, and it starts at 11, Lana?
Ten.
Ten. At ten, it's over at two. Okay. And then Cottonwood Chambers moved their breakfast also to the college, starting April 14th, and you'll go around the building to L&amp;M Building, and that starts at seven in the morning. But the job fair's gonna be a big one this year.
Okay. And what, which day was that?
That's the 11th.
The 11th of April.
Yes.
And where?
It's at the college.
At the college. That's at the college also.
Building's L&amp;M.
L&amp;M, okay. Great deal. So I just wanted to add that there's a lot of different events happening this whole week for SciTech, and those are those little, you see those little banners like all over the city with the little lizard? And you can get on www.vvsciTech.org and find out what's happening in your town or neighborhood. And this has been one of those exemplary things where we have so much cooperation among cities and towns. We've got Clarkdale, Cottonwood, Camp Verdi, Sedona's now involved, even this year, for the first year, we have a Sedona School involved, and so that's exciting, the Big Park School is involved with it. And we have a lot of different businesses and utilities and schools, the college, two colleges, schools. So it's really a wonderful event, and what it's all about really is that it promotes science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, and that is not just, we sometimes just expect our schools to take care of those things, but really to promote these to our young people. It really takes a whole community, and this is the community getting together and working together to bring these exciting events. And I'd like to thank Rudy, and Morgan's been helping, and the chiefs from the police and fire, and Debbie Breckwright's has done a whole bunch, working with Mingus, collaborating and coordinating, and other employees also. Okay, so the next item is awards. Employee of the quarter for the first quarter is Jeff Cook, our purchasing agent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, Council, I was the one who nominated Jeff Cook, and this is the first time I've nominated him, but that's the first or maybe second time he's gotten this award. You know, one of the things, we've had this position for about four years now, and Jeff's been in it a little over a year's time, and he's kind of brought a whole new standard to that department, working along with our attorney, Steve Orton, and he's, they've standardized a lot of the documents so that everything is, it's mirrored, everything is mirrored between all the documents, including requirements for insurances and all the terms and, so anyways, but that, that isn't all of it. The other part of it is, since he's taken over the purchasing department, he's also established some real strong relationships with a lot of our department heads and managers we have. He's also developed a real good rapport with all of our contractors. We get nothing but glowing comments about how well and how professional he deals with them, how even keel, how, how, how he tries to work things to where we become win-win. So we've got a lot good, a lot of good rapport, a lot of good comments from our contractors as well as our department heads. Other things he's done is he was able to, he was instrumental in the conversion of our business registration, as you may recall, we took over business registration a few years ago from the clerk's office into the finance office, and then we go ahead and we've had an arcade program that was causing problems, we got the ERP program, he helped convert it over, and it's gone along relatively smooth. And then lastly, one of the things that we were really proud of him was, in one of our contracts recently, there was a $41,000 error that was kind of buried inside the contract, and he was able to find it, and he actually took the contractor to task and had him reduce the amount. Whether it was an error or not, we don't care, we don't want to sign a contract that's forty, forty thousand dollars over, we originally discussed, and he did a real good job with that. So we're, I was real proud. I'm really proud of my staff, but I'm, this time, I'm really proud of Jeff for all the work he's done in, in raising the bar as a, as a purchasing professional. He's, his finances back, his background is finance, but he's taken to purchasing relatively, relatively well. He hit the ground coming and, I mean, running, and I'm really pleased with the way, the way he's worked out. We're real proud to have him on our staff.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm just, I'm honored to be the recipient of the award. I come to work every day and I'm surrounded by employees that are equally deserving and hardworking, so I feel thankful to Rudy for the nomination, and I'm just glad to be here, I enjoy it.
You're always great things about you, always, nothing ever negative, always positive, glowing, glowing reports and comments, so if the city manager wants to come up and, Mr. Rodriguez, Council, you want to come up? That's great, too, come on up. So we would like to present the city council and the city manager and the boss over at finance would like to present this to Jeff Cook, employee of the quarter award, first quarter of 2016. And the vice mayor, Alex, the good stuff.
Thank you.
A small token of our appreciation for you. Is anyone here to accept the proclamation for Riverfest? I bet, I wonder if they knew, did they know about it? They were, did we call Wendy?
No.
Okay. All right, so Riverf- Riverfest Month. Whereas the Verdi River is one of the most important geological features in the Verdi Valley, and whereas the Verdi River is a major resource for our residential and business community. Whereas the Verdi River provides extremely valuable agricultural, economic, recreational, social, and sporting opportunities for the people of the Verdi Valley and Arizona, and whereas the Verdi River Valley Nature Organization produces and facilitates a series of Verdi River-centered events in the month of April known as Riverfest, and whereas the Verdi River Valley Nature Organization inspires, encourages, invites, and promotes community-wide participation in Riverfest, and whereas Riverfest brings healthy, sustainable tourism to the Verdi Valley that is consistent with the City of Cottonwood Municipal Economic Development Plan and with our environmental stewardship goals. Now therefore, I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Riverfront, Riverfest, Riverfest Month in the City of Cottonwood. Okay, so the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to the next item. Approval of minutes. Regular meetings of March 1st and 15th, 2016, and joint work session of March 8th, 2016.
Move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Elinsky made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be a routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item num, item number one is application for extension of premises liquor license permit submitted by Steve W. Morkin for that brewing company located at 300 East Cherry Street for an event scheduled for April 9th, 2016. Resolution number 2833 affirming the city's fair housing policy, making known the city's commitment to the principle of fair housing, and describing actions the city shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Are there any items that someone would like to pull from the agenda for discussion? Would, would members of the public like to pull any item for discussion? Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? All in favor, any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for-
I have a mayor. Do you want me to read the word?
Oh, the resolution? Yes. As I read through that, I made a mental note in my mind to read resolution number 2833, and thanks for the reminder.
Resolution number 2833, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, affirming a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing, and describing actions it shall undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item num, number one is a special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for chamber mixers scheduled for April 21st, 2016 at 639 North Main Street, July 21st, 2016 at 652 South Main Street, August 18th, 2016 at 1329 East State Route 89A, Suite 5, September 15th, 2016 at 597 East State Route 89A, October 20th, 2016 at 22 South 7th Street, November 17th, 2016 at 1329 East State Route 89A, Suite 5, and December 8th, 2016 at 500 East Cherry.
Mayor, I have a conflict.
Okay. The vice mayor is declaring a conflict. Mr. Pratt?
This is, again, one of those no-brainers, because we do support the chamber and their efforts to reach out to the community, and I appreciate that we have almost a full year's on here, I guess the whole year, so, so we don't have to do it in bits and pieces every meeting. So I, I just think this is a no-brainer.
Any comments from members of the public, or from Ms. Tolleson and all? Okay, Mr. Pratt?
I move to recommend approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for chamber mixers scheduled for April 24th, 1st, 2016 at 639 North Main Street, July 21st, 2016 at 652 South Main Street, August 18th, 6th, 2016 at 1329 East State Route 89A, Suite 5, September 15th, 2016 at 597 East State Route 89, October 20th, 2016 at 22 South 7th Street, November 27, 17th, 2016 at 1329 East State Route 89, Suite 5, and December 8th, 2016 at 500 East Cherry Street.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Elinsky seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor? I'll be stepping down for the-
You're stepping down for this one? Okay. Councilmember Dowling is declaring a conflict on ordinance number 621. Item number two, ordinance number 621, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 1.96 acres, located at 950 South Camino Real, APN 40604046H, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C1 light commercial to PAD planned area development, and this is the first reading. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. As mentioned, zoning Z16001 AAA Cool Storage. It is a request for a rezone from C1 light commercial to PAD planned area development. It is located at 950 South Camino Real, just off of Main Street, 89A. Here's, here's that intersection, here's Camino Real. Right now, it's currently a vacant car wash. Some of you have been by there, you may have remembered that car wash has been shut down for a few years now. The property's just sitting there vacant. The owner is the owner of the AAA Cool Storage over here, kind of across the street into the south a little bit, which is also PAD. That's outdoor storage, this is going to be more of an indoor storage unit, climate-controlled. They're going to have about 176 units. The property is approximately 1.71 acres, the building itself's going to be just under 37,000 square feet. There's a little bit closer of a view of the property there. There's two entrances on it, there's one off South Camino Real here, and one off of Elm Street here. They're going to have six parking stalls, two loading zones, about 24% open space, again, the size of the building's just under 37,000 square feet. The building height's going to be 20 feet, they're going to have setbacks that far exceed what is required, setbacks won't be an issue. Staff has only received two concerns, just questioning a couple items, there were ones from a neighboring property owner regarding drainage, and how the flows can come off the property, and right now it's puddling on his, and then the hotel that's just to the north of it is, just made, made a comment about air conditioning units and noise generated from that. As I mentioned, the site here, this is showing the entrance off of South Camino Real. It's going to be a one-way loop through there, so you're not going to have entrance and exit off both sides. Vehicles will pull in off of South Camino Real. Here's the parking right here in front where the office is going to be, they're going to loop around the backside this way, the loading zones are going to be back here, kind of on the west side, southwest side of the property there, and then they'll exit onto Elm Street. There's some of the elevations. There are some of the colors that are going to be used. The applicant is here, his agent's here also with a color board that he passed around to give you kind of a better idea on what these colors are. Here's a signage that they're looking to propose that would be fit within the sign code, there's no issues on that. Landscape plan meets all requirements, can use drought-tolerant plants, ground cover, everything meets the landscape and code. And here's some pictures of what the site currently looks like with the vacant building, vacant car wash sitting there right now, various angles, different views, that's, that's the front view off of South Camino Real, that's the entrance off there. That's across the street, that's directly to the southeast, east kind of, that's the shuttle for the airport, Sedona Shuttle. These are some apartments to the west, there's been no concerns raised from them, the staff has received thus far. There's a Baptist church, I, there's a church to the south here, again, no, no concerns raised from them. This is looking towards the other storage unit that the current property owner has And again, this is just the first reading, and the applicant is here to answer any specific detailed questions on the project if you'd like. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you said that were concerns about the drainage from one neighbor and the air conditioning noise from another neighbor?
Thank you.
Were you able to ameliorate those concerns or address those concerns?
Yes, Mr. Pender's here to give you more details on that. He, he has spoken to the applicant or the property owner with regards to drainage, and we're going to have some work done.
And they were satisfied?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
It's a good thing. Any other questions? I guess we still have a quorum for, yeah, we're good.
First reading.
So it's the first reading. Are there any comments from members of the public on this item? Okay, that's the first reading. City Clerk, please read ordinance number 621 by title only.
Ordinance number 621, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 1.96 acres, located at 950 South Camino Real, APN 406 dash 04 dash 046H, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C dash 1 light commercial to PAD planned area development. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The next item is setting a public hearing date to consider the application for a bingo license submitted by Rebecca Riffle, applicant for the Main Street Bar and Restaurant located at 1 South Main Street, and I need to declare a conflict, and we'll turn the meeting over to the vice mayor.
Okay. Who's in, let me get to the- That's you, Matt.
We received a application to run a bingo license for the main stage, and this is basically just setting the public hearing process.
Okay. Any other suggestions besides what's in our, our packet? It says in here that they want us to move it to April 19, for April 19, 2016 at 6, to consider the bingo license application submitted by Rebecca, so, any questions or?
I say that date sounds fine to me.
You're from there, right? And do you have any, any?
So basically, councilmembers and vice mayor, with all the research that we've done, originally we called the liquor board. Rebecca had called to make sure before we even started promoting it, before we started even doing it, if we're, you know, in, in compliance with, with the laws, obviously we're, you know, very protective of our, our liquor licenses and, you know, the laws of the community. And they, they assured us that as long as the, you know, our establishment didn't take any money, we were, we were fine. That's how we, we held the games, and with the monarch of our, of our brand, music, our community, we put the community, we, it's Penny, our host, did stuff for the, for the mission. We actually have a, a kid who's on the Mingus football team, and he came in and did some, some fundraisings for him to be able to go to a camp. So this was, is a great community event that lots of us have, you know, participated in. But while, you know, while we started going through this, this whole process, we realized we were kind of a, a unique situation, that we're, we have a liquor license, even though the Legion and the Moose and the Elks have liquor licenses as well, they're a private member club. So what we decided to do, which we were already doing on our own, is to incorporate this, this bingo game with a, a local charity, and so we're doing the, one for the Verdi, so for the Verdi Valley Conservation. And so essentially, this would be a liquor license, I mean, a bingo license that is in, the, since they don't have a facility in order to raise money for their, their cause, we provide the facility, and, and they, and all, and the portion of the proceeds, you know, some goes back to the players, and the other portion goes to the, to the cause. So that's what we're looking at, that's, you know, and I, I think it's kind of a unique situation that we're, we're dealing with here, and a, and a unique situation for the community where we can actually, because to my understanding and my research, no other than a, a religious group, a veterans' club, or a Moose Association, has been able to, to acquire this type of license. to acquire this type of license. But we've seen tremendous, tremendous, uh, uh, positive effects from, let's say, two-hour window, seven to nine-thirty, where tons of members of the, of the community get together, we're able to do some good, have some good clean fun, regardless of the fact that it's called Not Your Grandmother's Bingo. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's still good clean fun. And, uh, and we have, we're in a position to do some good for the community, um, in ways that haven't been done before. So essentially, I just would love your support and, and helping to try to make this go through.
Well, for your information, great grandmothers and grandmothers like to have fun, too.
Okay, okay. Oh, so, so the, the, the point, uh, that I should have made at first was, so the application that we originally applied for was an application A, um, because we, again, we were going through this entire learning process as our research was continuing. We now have, uh, applied for an application B and had a Verde, uh, one for the Verde fill out that entire application. So it's an application B filled out by one for the Verde, um, and they will be essentially, you know, leasing one day a week, Wednesday night from seven to nine-thirty, main stages, facilities, to, to hold, you know, uh, this charitable cause. And so we're going to submit, um, the, the new application, if that's okay for you all.
Okay, and tonight, we're going to change the hearing date to April nineteenth twenty sixteenth with approval of the council. Are there any questions to?
I do have a question, so, will it always, will the proceeds always go then to one for the Verde? Can you change it up to different organizations?
The, the way that I understand, uh, the laws, um, is that the application is for a year period. So, at, at one point, I was thinking maybe we can do a, a different charitable event, you know, an organization every month, but due to the fact that we're ultimately, after this formality, have to go to the liquor board and to the, the revenue, uh, board, it seems to me that the, the way to go about it is, is a, is basically like a yearly contract with, with a charity.
Okay.
And if that, if that changes, or, you know, there is a, a different, um, understanding of that, uh, we, you know, I mean, we want to support the community and everybody.
Sure, sure.
Um, so, but at, at this, at this point, this is, as I'm gaining more and more information, this is, this is what I'm understanding.
Okay, so for one year, it'll, the proceeds will go to one for the Verde?
Yeah, one year is license, we then have to re, reapply for the license a year later. Uh, every charitable organization in the state of Arizona has to be, um, operating for, uh, two, a minimum of two years.
Right.
And, and so this complies with this particular charity.
Just curious if, if, there's the Cornucopia Foundation here in the Verde Valley, which is more of like a blanket, five oh one C three?
Okay.
And I think they'd take a cut, I'm sure, of the money that's funneled through them, but it might be an opportunity to put them as your, not, I don't want to rewrite everything you know, but, uh, you know, th- then you could, you could-
Yeah.
-change up the, the causes, you know, throughout the year.
We're, we're one hundred percent open. I mean, a- as I said, as it says on our, on our music art community, we, we want to support that community, um, so, with, with the combined knowledge of, of the, the council here, uh, if there is a, a better way of doing this, I'm one hundred percent, uh, and all of us on the set are, you know, open to that and welcoming that.
Yeah. This seems, again, like a no-brainer, I think we should have the public hearing, um, from what I hear, it's a great event, my wife and I haven't gotten to go, go yet, but we plan to. Um, you are helping out charitable organizations, and your establishment itself, I think, has been a real asset to our community and, and brought in arts and some really creative shows, so I support this wholeheartedly.
Are there any more questions out in the audience? Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Hey, Matt pointed out that, that, uh, Mr. Robin may be talking about a different, or what may need to be a different application than the one that, that was submitted to the clerk's office and is part of your packets.
Yes, we, we, we actually have that, uh, updated, uh, version of the application, uh, so it went from, we submitted, uh, an application A, and we are going to now resubmit, uh, application B.
Okay, so i- if the council is going to approve, because what happened, the council has the packets, is, is what they may presume they were voting on?
Okay, gotcha.
We can still vote on it being, as, as long as we make it a B instead of a?
Yeah, if there's any other, was there any other different information that, that you provided?
Uh, no, 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 it was, uh, other than-
The nonprofit.
Yes, it's a nonprofit, yeah.
Okay, and, and we're just setting a hearing for, for the application, and, and we'll get a revised application in-
Yes.
-to the packet, okay.
Yeah, we, we made that for you tonight.
Mr. Pratt?
Is it time for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to set a hearing for April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen at six P M. to consider the bingo license application submitted by Rebecca Riffle for the Main Stage Bar and Restaurant.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it passes, so we'll have the hearing on April nineteenth.
Vice Mayor, Council, thank you.
Okay. When I apologized to Mr. Elinsky, I called him Tim.
It's okay. Thank you.
Whoever is leading the meeting gets to choose how they want to do that, so it's okay. It's just comfortable. Um, claims and adjustments? Move to pay the claims?
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, and Mr. Elinsky seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
So, the mayor made the motion, and Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?